Commissioner Suzanne Avila.
Here.
Next item, item D, minutes from our June 24th meeting, as the commission had the.
Mr. Chairman, I'll abstain from voting on the minutes as I was out most of the last meeting.
Commissioner Donaldson will be abstaining from the vote. Other commissioners, have you had the opportunity to review the minutes or any changes or comments from the minutes from our June 24th, 2015 meeting?
And just a note, we made a correction under item number F, public hearing on the first section, Commissioner Donaldson, we changed that to recused himself because of the proximity of us home to the shopping center, instead of that he was a conflict of interest, so we fixed that.
So I'll make the motion, we approve the minutes as corrected?
We have a motion to approve the minutes. And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item on our agenda is item E, public participation. Persons group shall be allowed to speak without interruption up to five minutes in compliance with applicable meeting rules. Questions to speaker or response to questions or comments shall be handled after the speaker has completed his or her comments. The staff want to make a recommendation right now?
Yes, we will be taking the one public comment card that is not on the agenda, and I believe that would be Mr. Rosales. And then we will take the rest of the comment cards when you get to that item, and then we'll have a recommendation for you. I guess, public comment, public participation is limited to 30 minutes. We have approximately 25 cards. Under your rules of operation, we have up to five minutes. We would suggest that you extend the public comment by an additional 30 minutes to an hour or thereafter, and then limit the public comment from five minutes to three minutes to accommodate all of the speakers. So you'll take that as a motion when we get to that.
And we'll do that when we get to item I?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll stay on item E, public participation, and this is the opportunity for anyone in the public to speak on any item that is not on the agenda. So I have one card, and this will be from Jorge Rosales. Mr. Rosales, welcome.
Thank you, Chairperson Commissioners, good evening. My name is Jorge Rosales, and tonight I'm here wearing two hats, one as the president of the Azusa Sister City Committee, and I believe I staff presented to you copies of an invitation to Friday night's fundraiser for the sister city organization. As you all know probably, we do exchange of youth from Zacatecas, our sister city, and vice versa from Azusa to Zacatecas, and we'll be doing that in September during their Independence Day. We're going to be sending the mariachi group that you see on the flyer down there, and in return there will be sending a mariachi of youth for our Golden Days in October. So that's the fundraiser, and the tickets are $15 apiece, but you get a full meal and a two-hour variety show with the mariachi, Camino Real, as well as the Folclorico, Craces dancers. And this is at the senior center, and it's Friday night, the 17th, from 6:30 till 9 o'clock at night. And I'm going to leave some flyers in the bag for anybody in the audience interested or the public in the next few days. The second announcement that I have is the 11th Annual Korean Armistice Day Ceremony that we do here in Azusa to honor our Korean veterans. This was started by a Korean veteran, John Moreno, back in 2005, so this would be our 11th anniversary. As you all know, John Moreno died July 10th of 2010, but thanks to the hosting organizations, which is the Azusa Veterans Memorial Committee, the Veterans of Foreign War Post 80-70, the American Legion 180, and the city of Azusa, the ceremony has continued to be celebrated. And this one will take place on Monday, July 27th, at 10:00 a.m. in front of City Hall. You're probably wondering why the 27th, why on a Monday morning, but that's the actual end of the Korean War, and the committees did not want to change the date, they want to keep it on the 27th, so we have kept it on Monday, the 27th, at 10:00 a.m. Last year we had over 40 Korean War veterans. This year we anticipate close to 70, at least that's the number of invitations that I sent out recently. So those are the two announcements that I have tonight. Again, I'll leave some additional flyers in the bag, and I thank Kurt for providing you with copies of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosales. Okay, that's the only card we have for public participation on speaking on any item that is not on the agenda. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak and participate on this public participation on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing. Public participation. Next item, it's item F, public hearings.
There are no public hearings tonight?
Item G, unfinished business?
There is no unfinished business.
Item H, new business?
There's no new business.
Okay, that brings us to item I, reports and communication. I-1, resolutions of denial for minor use permit, MUP 2015-12 and MUP 2015-13, request to allow a commercial recreation facility indoor use and extended hours of a coin-operated arcade located in the Edgewood Shopping Center. Commissioner Donald will recuse himself from this item. We'll give him a couple minutes to leave the dais. Okay, we'll continue with item I-1. Staff?
Chair members of the Planning Commission, on June 24th, you held a public hearing on two minor use permits regarding outdoor or indoor commercial recreational facility and extended hours for the operation of said indoor commercial recreational facility at the Edgewood Center. After your public hearing, we had come forward with a recommendation of approval, and the commission directed us at that meeting to prepare resolutions of denial. Before you tonight are the two resolutions of denial based on your input from us at that public hearing. So tonight is, you closed the public hearing at the last meeting, and tonight you are voting on the resolutions. And then I'm going to let the city attorney take it over from here as the procedure since we have 23 cards to speak for this item.
Absolutely. Just to clarify the procedure, at the last meeting, the commission voted to deny the application and instructed staff to memorialize, to prepare a resolution to memorialize that denial. As a result tonight, your action is limited to consideration of these resolutions. You can instruct staff to bring the item back in the future if you wish, but there is no, there was no notice public hearing today, so you couldn't, for example, reverse your decision at the meeting tonight. You can vote on these resolutions only, but you do have leeway to instruct us to come back if you so wish. On the subject of public participation for tonight's hearing, the Planning Commission Rules of Conduct indicate that there's a maximum permissible 30-minute public comment period on any item unless commission wishes to extend that period by a majority vote. There are 23 speakers tonight. Typically, we allow five minutes per speaker. Obviously, that would be a lot longer than the 30-minute period. What we're going to suggest tonight is that we limit public comment to each individual speaker to three minutes, leaving to a maximum of one hour and nine minutes. If you'd be interested in taking that, you'd have to take it up as a motion with a second. Thank you.
Okay, just speaking for myself, there's a lot of people who took the time out to come out and speak on this item, and I think we should give them the opportunity to speak. My recommendation would be to reduce the five minute per person to three minutes and extended an hour, give or take, until we get all the cards done. Other comments from the commissioners, or if you feel any?
I'm in agreement with that.
Okay, so then I'll make the motion that we extended 30 minutes and we reduced the time from five minutes to three minutes so we can listen to everyone who came out tonight. Do I get a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent. I also have one minor correction to the resolutions presented to you tonight. Resolution number 2015-22, the first recital on the third line read minor use permit number MUP 2015-12. That should have read, and we would propose it, it does read from now on, MUP 2015-13. Thank you.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, on which resolution?
It's resolution number 2015-22.
Okay.
That's the use resolution.
Right.
The third line of the first recital. It reads, I believe, with respect to the requested minor use permit number, MUP 2015-12 currently.
Oh, I see.
It should read 13.
Got it.
Thank you.
Okay, so as voted, we will allow public participation. The time now is 7:19. First person up, you can come up and introduce yourself, and before you start speaking, and again, you will have three minutes per person to speak on item I and item I only. First card is Gerald Godoy.
My name is Gerald Godoy. I currently live in Monterey Park, California. I've been attending the arcade for the past few years. I'm a taxpaying citizen who's currently employed by a private company that works with mainly autistic children in San Gabriel Valley. The arcade has always played a role in my life. Being a product of a single mother attending college, I would often frequent the Cal State LA Arcade and library, so if I was able to finish my homework on time, I would be able to go to the arcade. During this time, I was able to keep a straight A grade point average, and I wasn't any acts of violence, I wasn't in fights, I wasn't anything of that nature. In college, arcades again played a big role in my life. I attended Cal Poly Pomona and found myself very stressed trying to keep up with the quota system. It wasn't until I found the arcade on campus that my stress had diminished. Actually, I found a really good networking with all the people at the college, and so I found resources that could help me with like my math skills or English, you know, writing a paper, and we actually came together, and it was actually very, very beneficial to me. And so it wasn't until I found the Super Arcade later on in life that it showed me, I already knew what the implications of the arcade could do for me. And so, let's see, this, hold on. Okay, so after I graduated from Cal Poly Pomona, I entered into my current position working with children with autism. This is a very stressful job that requires my utmost patience and dedication. So when I found out the Super Arcade, I knew the implications that the arcade would have on my stress and just my overall quality of life. I was not wrong immediately when I entered the doors. Mr. Watson greeted me with hey's and hellos in the community, really actually just embraced me. They were calling me to, you know, hang out with them afterwards, to play games, or just to hang out and watch movies, and kind of actually just de-stress myself from my job, which was very stressful for me. Also, Super Arcade has also allowed me to get into the video game profession, also broadcasting too, so I've been able to actually brand myself and go into, kind of like a second career of networking with all the people. So it's allowed me to learn about things that I've never actually would have learned of.
Your three minutes is up.
Three minutes, okay.
Thank you so much, appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
All right. Next speaker, Eric Perez. Yeah, and what I'll do is, since you guys can't see the clock, when you get to one minute, I'll put up one finger just to let you know that you have one minute remaining, that way you can close your comments.
Hello, my name is Eric Perez. I'm a 35-year-old college graduate, currently residing in the city of Downey. First and foremost, I would like to thank you for your time and consideration in regards to this matter. I decided to speak here at the meeting today after watching the council meeting that took place on June 24th in regards to Mr. Watson obtaining a permit to operate in the city of Azusa. I grew up in the city of Whittier, and during my teen years, the gang problem, specifically in South Whittier where I lived, was very prevalent. Fortunately, I had parents that were very diligent in keeping me away from that lifestyle and out of trouble most of the time. Early on, they recognized that supporting my passion for gaming was a very productive way to channel my time and energy. They supported my hobby by subscribing to gaming magazines, taking me to tournaments, and being welcoming to my new friends and always encouraging me to improve. Had I not had this specific outlet to keep me off the streets, I don't think that I would have been able to go to college and be an inspiration for the younger ones in my family today. Though the gang situation isn't as bad as it was in the 90s, it does still exist, and the way the abuse of sex and drugs is portrayed in the mainstream media today, 2015 has a lot more scenarios for our youth to fall into. I've had a handful of nephews that are in their teens right now, and not all of them are as fortunate as me to have the parental guidance that I had growing up. I started to see the negative influences of the street lifestyle on my nephews, just like the gang influences were inching up on me in my youth before my parents took hold. Because of the tremendous positive impact gaming has had on me, I introduced my nephews to the competitive gaming scene via Mr. Watson's previous establishment in Walnut. As we frequented Super Arcade little by little, just like me and my youth, my nephew started dropping their bad set of so-called friends and meeting positive role models like Mr. Watson, as well as fellow competitors from literally all over the world. The way competitive gaming harnesses one's competitive nature and channels it into a positive and fulfilling activity has done wonders for myself and my family.
One minute.
I pretty much view Super Arcade as a digital YMCA of sorts in regards that it provides a healthy, productive, and positive way to spend one's time and keep people out of trouble. With the direct impact the scene has had on me personally, I'm sure you could understand. With the direct impact the scene has had on me personally, I'm sure you could understand why I would be troubled when I heard the misconceptions of an establishment like this one on June twenty-fourth. I highly doubt that most businesses have as much value to a community as Super Arcade in terms of being a positive influence on our youth. My nephews and I are only a small part of a large number of people that have used Super Arcade to direct their energy into something positive. There may very well be youth in the city of Azusa at this very moment on the verge of taking the wrong path of life, just like my nephews and myself once were, because an outlet like this does not exist here yet. I humbly ask that you truly think of the community for generations to come and grant Mr. Watson the permission to impact more lives like he has mine. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card, Rachel Mills.
I'm Rachel Mills from Monrovia. I spoke last time, so thank you for letting me speak again. Thank you, members of the board. I, Rachel Mills, am here on behalf of Super Arcade to present to you some facts. The city of Azusa has two colleges, the Azusa Pacific University and Citrus College. The latter has a gamers' guild club. So one would assume the percentage of those within the surrounding area would have a bachelor's degree or higher. Sadly, the percentage, as last collected by the Census Bureau, was only nineteen point five percent. I wondered what was wrong with that number, if the fact that there were two colleges in such a small area affected this. But I took a look at the number and percentage of Pasadena, and their number was significantly higher, by not just double, at forty-eight point seven percent. I then took a further look at some of the major differences between the neighborhoods and what was done to keep those students interested in those neighborhoods after they graduate. A vibrant, enriching nightlife is provided to them with many different bars and hotspots spread out miles around the city from the schools. This encourages the students to explore the community further beyond just those two or three-block radiuses that I see presented to the students currently for Azusa, which at present only has one movie theater, a handful of bars, and a Target. Pasadena also has recently hosted its own arcade, Neon Retro, to the young hip college student crowd, further ensuring their desire to stay close to the area after obtaining diplomas and making a life for themselves and future families. Why do I bring up this college demographic? Large number of college student-educated residents is listed as a third guideline for Whole Foods' consideration on development of real estate. I took the opportunity to explore the property Mike Watson wants to lease.
One minute.
And I may tell you that it's not the completely unsavory level people seem to think it is, but it is hardly a hard, it's a hard sell to get, the type of businesses that you may wish to put there, such as a Whole Foods. While the plaza is not dirty, it's certainly not Beverly Hills. It's middle-class, and there's nothing wrong with the demographic. There's a lack of sidewalk. The street that faces Plaza is not high-traffic and warrants the big businesses like Rite Aid, already the prime spot at Azusa. Take it up. I wouldn't put a supermarket there, there's already a Target and Walmart within close proximity. I see it in the best interest of the city of Azusa to keep this college students interested in the city by providing them experiences within a ten-minute bike ride from their campuses. Nothing is better than an arcade, and why not put it in a place that needs businesses? Further down the road, even the inclusion of Super Arcade into your community could foster a positive family environment and the city-sponsored tournaments and events. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mills. Can, can we please not applause at this meeting, please? It's not allowed. We appreciate it. Thank you so much. So only, it's gonna take longer, it's gonna take away from your time that you guys have allowed to speak, sorry, no disrespect. Mark and Mia Gunther? Welcome.
Hi, good evening.
Hello. We are Mark and Mia Gunther, owners and operators of Neon Retro Arcade in Pasadena, California.
We're here today because we actually only opened about six months ago, and we went through a very similar process when we were opening. Obviously, opening an arcade in two thousand and fifteen is not an easy task, and I'm sure Mr. Watson can obviously attest to that as well. It's a really unique business, and it's not one that you see quite often any longer, which makes it all the more reason for people to be diligent, of course, looking into it. But we did notice in our process there were, there were some misconceptions about arcades that we had to address with the city planners, and we wanted to share some of that experience with you.
And essentially, what we find is that the arcades of today are a lot different than the arcades that we think of in the past. Today, the target demographic for gamers is quite a bit older than we think typically, and these people also have disposable income. So what we're finding is we get a lot of people, particularly in arcade, who also bring their kids, and they're, they're showing the kids, these are the games that we enjoyed when we were your age, and they have a blast. So it's a multi-generational activity that can be very wholesome for the entire family to enjoy together. And also, we work very well with local businesses as well. We've established great partnerships with many of them, and it's fantastic to see our customers be customers of other establishments as well.
And one of the things that we thought was, we thought going in would be something that would definitely happen was just the attention that some unique business like this draws to a town. And we opened in Old Town Pasadena, which is, you know, there's, you know, new restaurants and new things happening all the time. We were shocked to see the response, not only by the local government, but also by the community members there who just welcomed us with open arms, and the media attention that we received. Without sending any press releases out, Pasadena has received a huge amount of attention and great public relations from us just opening. And it's something that we wanted to share with you because obviously that's something that, you know, any community that's developing is looking forward towards. And our business attracts a lot of additional dollars for things like retailers and restaurants, and we've seen a lot of positive impact just in our immediate area alone. So we think a business like Mr. Watson's would definitely do the same for Azusa.
Absolutely. And we find that well-managed arcades can be-
Sorry, you got forty-five seconds.
Sure.
Apologize.
Can be a very, a great place for people to come together and connect, and also he can bring some fantastic, unique skill sets into the community. So really hope you'll reconsider and approve Super Arcade. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sarah Ann Lopez?
Hi, my name is Sarah Lopez, and I live in Norwalk, California. Thank you. I've been going to Super Arcade for about three years, and it's a fun and a safe place, and it's become sort of a second home to a lot of us. I've made a lot of close friends there that I talk to every day, and I know the people there are trustworthy, caring, respectful people. And we just appreciate everything that Watson has done for us, giving us this arcade. And that's why, even though I'm bad at public speaking, I felt like it was important for me to do this. And I just wanna say that if we're accepted, we'll bring nothing but positive and good to your community. Thank you.
Thank you. Armando Solorio?
Good evening. My name is Armando. I come from Alhambra. I am automotive design student at the Art Center College of Design, and I spoke here last time. And one of the things that I wanna share tonight is, is just the awareness, you know. I definitely see a larger crowd than I did last time, and I'm really excited for this. It's, it's the awareness that I wanna point out. And much of being aware as a designer, it's gave me a sense of, of like being alive and just being connected, being connected to the outside world, and just noticing that everything is changing and everything adapts to, to what it needs to in order to thrive and to survive. And places like Super Arcade is a place that is, I think, struggling. There's a, there's a lot of adversity, and I think that we can learn a lot from a place like Super Arcade, just purely because I think human beings in general are just, they have that instinct to just push forward, and I think that's a, a strong aspect to, to learn from. Now, I have a few things here that I wanna share to you, just because I know that people think that games are bad, and I wanna share three questions that I have here that might help define the good in video games and places like Super Arcade. Number one, do video games make us measurably better at anything? And number two, are video games worthwhile compared to other activities? Well, for the first question, I wanna turn to scientific proof and, and research that I did. For one, scientists are saying that gamers of all ages perform better than non-gamers on tests of attention, speed, accuracy, and multitasking. As, as a matter of fact, soldiers in deployment are able to reduce psychological stress by nearly seventy-five percent just by playing video games three to four hours. I guess my closing segment would probably be just a philosophical aspect towards Super I wanna leave tonight just by closing really quick and just sharing this with you. If certain games are not considered to be applicable to a high quality of life, do game developers need to have an ethical and moral obligation to consider the impacts of their games on gamers' lives, relationships, or communities? Is this obligation any more or less than other creators of media and art? These questions can't be answered by scientific research or by interviewing players. It's an exist-, it's a existential question, and I think one needs to have a strong philosophical background to fully understand this. Thank you.
Thank you. When you come up, if you can just state your name and a city you're from, please.
Good evening. My name is Tommy Williams. I'm from Torrance, California. One of the things I wanted to address was the concern with overall neighborhood safety along the shopping mall and surrounding neighborhoods. One thing that we see where Super Arcade was previously located was within Walnut, which, as previous statistics show, from two thousand and ten to two thousand and thirteen, the average crime per one thousand residents would be about one point three. People could be the victim of some form of crime within that neighborhood. California standard was about four, let's see, it's about, about four-thirty per resident, so every one thousand residents, four would probably be a victim of some type of crime, whether that be violent crime. Property damage would be approximately fifteen per person within Walnut, but in California as a whole, it'd be about twenty-six. Where Super Arcade was located, the general crime rate was mostly located approximately three to four city blocks, either southwest, northwest, but nothing within the immediate vicinity of Super Arcade. So it took a, it was approximately about a square mile to two square miles before there was any actual crime within, within the area. Most crimes that did take place within the neighborhood were about two to three incidences per six months going back to the last five years. For most of the residents within the neighborhood, most of them actually enjoyed the arcade, were able to bring people there, to have more community organized efforts and fun times within the neighborhood due to Super Arcade being there. But the overall fear of crime or a desire of coming within the neighborhood was not really a truthful statement. Most of the people who come to Super Arcade, as demonstrated earlier, were this generation, which is an older crowd, usually who have family or friends, would love to take people there to enjoy that. In terms of increasing quality of life, that was something that did happen because people did enjoy the games, and they enjoyed actually having a good community. And increasing just awareness and overall togetherness of video games and video game players around. That's about all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Juan Mesa. Welcome.
Hello. Hi. My name is Juan Mesa. I am an Azusa resident, so I can speak from a personal experience that, I've been going to Super Arcade for many years. Mike Watson's a great owner, he's a great person. Everything about that place, everyone gets together. There's no trouble, there's very little crime, as stated earlier. Everyone that goes there goes to hang out with their fellow, you know, friends, community that, that share that interest. And one of the things that they wanna do is they wanna improve themselves at, not only their hobby, but also their relationships with people. And how do I say this? In order to get better, they need to focus, so they don't have time to waste on other things that would, like drugs, alcohol, things that would diminish their ability to focus and execute their ability to, you know, what's the word? To get through a competitive match at the best of their ability. As for the shopping center itself, the Edgewood Shopping Center, it desperately needs something there, some kind of form of entertainment to bring people in because it's, it's dying. The Florida de Mexico that hasn't been there for years, it's been gone for years, that place has been empty. Aaron's is gone. The Bilo that recently disappeared, the, the supermarket, is gone. I go there every week still because I go to get water from the Stop for Water shop. So I see this every week. When there's too much traffic on the freeways, I take the streets, and I pass right through that street every, almost every, three out of the, the five days of the week for my commute. So I, I, I would say that this place desperately needs something to bring people to this place, and the people that would come here from Super Arcade, that Super Arcade would bring, I think would be perfect for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jose Palacios? Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for seeing me. My name is Jose Palacios, and I currently live in San Bernardino, California. First of all, a little introduction, I'm twenty-five years old. I used to live in Alabama, Jacksonville State University, studied biology for three years, and I moved back to California to continue my education, a little bit of a break. But upon moving back, I did take a job as a security guard, trained for a few months, and actually worked at a security guard post in Fontana for roughly two years. And as a previous security guard, I, I have plenty of experience, and I feel that I have the knowledge to say that the area in case, or the area that you see as unfit or as dangerous in any way, shape, or form is perfect and healthy for growth of an arcade. There is a gym right next door to it, and it's, it is safe. I have seen the actual arcade, I've looked through the windows. I have a full range of vision throughout the entire, the entire complex, from the back to the front. I know vision was a thing that you had a problem with, you couldn't see what was going on. Fortunately, Watson has designed the arcade cabinets that we use to be at waist level, so seeing over the crowd and everyone, if there ever is an incident, and, which there never is, is completely viable. There is no reason why safety or security should be a reason. But I, as a guard, it's, it's our, I, I remember you guys saying, I, I saw the previous hearing, and I heard two separate arguments stating that security would make customers feel threatened and persuade people not to see or view the area seriously. And I've also seen the other argument was which it needs security. And the bottom line is, security is meant to make people feel comfortable. We all set foot in this building feeling safe around security that is held in here, and not one of us did feel threatened. In, in closing, it's, it's hard to build an arcade. It is. It is hard to build up a community the way Mike Watson has. And Mr. Watson has, he hasn't affected me personally on my life, but the arcade and community in itself is just incredible. It, it's more of a family than anything else. These folks behind me, I hold them dear to my heart, and I know Mike Watson holds them even closer. And if you feel that it is unsafe in any way, shape, or form, and Mike Watson feels otherwise, I, I know Mike would never in any way keep any one of us in any form of danger. And I just wanna thank you here for hearing me out, and hopefully you guys make the right choice and allow them to have the permit. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Doc Mack? Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Doc Mack. I'm actually the owner of the Gallop and Ghost Arcade, which is out in Brookfield, Illinois. We opened in two thousand and ten, and now we are the largest arcade in the world. And when we opened, we met with a lot of similar concerns. People hadn't seen arcades in a long time and didn't know what to expect and didn't know what the, the people that would be showing up would be bringing with them and if it would be a safe clientele. In our five years, we have had no issues, and it's really all due to the community of the arcade. And you can see that there's a tremendous community already in place with this, which is usually one of the- which is usually one of the first issues that arcades have, staying open. This community is already in place. Since we've opened, we've helped nine arcades open, and we've addressed very similar concerns. We're currently helping thirteen new arcades open up all over the U.S. None of them are related to my arcade. They're just people that we're helping along to get into the industry and open up a profitable business. As everybody here can say that it's beneficial to them. It's a community. It's a place for all of them to go. But as a town, as a city, the benefits that it can bring to your town, your city is unmeasurable. For us, we've had people move to Chicago. We had players travel in from all over the world. They have a great community that really will attract players. Players that have gone to my arcade and the whole reason why I'm here. My players have said, "This is a solid arcade." And it, they were like, "You need to do something. You need to go out and help them in some way if you can." Again, having the information that we've had and helping the arcades that we've had open, from a business standpoint, for the community, it's only helped everything grow. New businesses have come to our town specifically to be around our location, which for any other business, usually that's not going to happen. This is something that, it's a very unique business that is very easily profitable and is very attractive to restaurants and other places of business. And I would like to make myself fully available to you, like three minutes is, I can go on for hours about this, but I'd like to make myself personally available to you with any questions and concerns. And again, it's my first time in your city. It seems amazing. I could only say that an arcade would do amazing things for it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Howard Chang. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Howard Chang. I'm originally from Diamond Bar and currently live in Fontana. I'm a marketing and sales executive, and in the evenings I attend Cal Poly Pomona for my master's in business and administration. Gaming is a hobby and a passion of mine, and I've seen firsthand the strength of the bonds that it creates and the kinds of people that it brings together. I want to address right off the bat the notion, or perhaps the misunderstanding, that Super Arcade is only going to bring more issues of the things that were discussed in the meeting last month. You know, issues of security or littering, loitering, or cleanliness. That's, because that's simply incorrect. I've been going to Super Arcade and arcades like it for about seven years. And I can say from experience that the regular patrons of Super Arcade
I'm sorry to interrupt you. The clock?
Do I get an extra three minutes?
No, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
The regular patrons of Super Arcade, we're not, you know, we're not criminals. We're not hoodlums or gangsters. We're part of an international community that encompasses all walks of life. It transcends social, ethnic, geographic, and economic barriers. It's comprised of business people, accountants, attorneys, doctors, designers, engineers, honest people with respectable professions who are really are just looking for a place to go to interact with people who share a common interest. And it's important to understand the kinds of people who are active in this community in order to address the concern that the arcade is going to bring Azusa and the city and the area around Edgewood down because I have every bit of confidence that it will in fact uplift those communities. As was just mentioned, you'll have these people with honest professions driving from all across the greater L.A. area, Inland Empire, Orange County, sometimes across from, you know, the East Coast, sometimes, you know, from overseas internationally, to come to Super Arcade, who, people who, you know, if not for the arcade, wouldn't really have any other reason to come to Azusa. And while we're here, you know, we'll get food, we'll go to the restaurants, and, you know, take a look at the, at the other shops and stores. We can contribute to the city of Azusa in a way that's greater than just through the arcade. And again, these are not the kinds of people that are going to litter or commit petty crimes. Instead, you're going to see people like us, the people, you know, in this room who've spoken already, people who enjoy this activity and specifically enjoy the social aspect of being able to participate in this activity with other people in person, rather than, you know, playing by ourselves at home alone. And I can't stress enough that the arcade is not going to foster violence, drunkenness, or crime simply because that's not the type of community that we are. If we wanted to get drunk, we'd go to a bar, but instead, we just want to play video games. Every community needs two things to stay alive. It needs a voice and it needs a home. We have the voice. You see us here. We've been speaking. We keep, we keep in touch with the international community online via social media and through online message boards. We have the voice. But for those of us who live in Southern California, we don't have a home. So please grant Super Arcade its minor use permits and give this community a home. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ariel Roldan.
Welcome. Good evening. My name is Israel Roldan. I'm, yes, my name is Israel. I'm here to support Super Arcade and Mr. Watson. I'm also the head of World Eight Incorporated in Los Angeles. It's a video game store. We've been around for about four years. When I first heard about Super Arcade opening its doors, I was thrilled and a bit saddened to hear that he was opening up here because my partner and I were not able to convince him to open up in L.A. We, we believe that, I know that the initial conflict had to do with the fifteen percent non-retail situation that the Plaza had, but luckily that's over. I just want to shine a little light on the video game industry as it is now, as opposed to what it used to be. Right now, it's about a $5.3 billion industry. It's, in America alone, there's about 155 million people that play video games, forty-four percent of which are women. There's, this has definitely expanded from what it's always been. There's a, I, yeah, and I'm old enough to remember the old arcade days. You know, I think I realize, you know, you see a ragtag group of people out here and you imagine what, you know, what could go wrong. But as, as you can see, it's not quite like that anymore, especially considering the average age of gamers now is about thirty-five years old. So, I mean, we'd be bringing our kids into this place just so they can, you know, get a feel for it. This is, this business, as, as others have said today, it's, it's good for the surrounding properties. It's good for the surrounding businesses. I mean, we, as a small store, host occasional tournaments, and the turnout we get alone is ridiculous just because of the space. Everybody, everybody looks forward to it once a month, especially the local businesses, the donut shops, the Subway sandwich shop, all of the coffee houses around the area. They're all thrilled when, when a tournament like this comes into town. And just as a side note, the tournament, I understand, might be a little bit hard to understand in terms of like taxation or how it, you know, it can be regulated or something like that. But consider that right now in South Korea, they've actually, they use a stadium, an actual sports stadium, to host a PC video game, which brings in billions of dollars worldwide, just, just to have it. It'll, it'll bring in, as I said, revenue. It'll bring in tourism. And with the gold line extending all the way out here from L.A., I mean, that can only be good things. So please consider that when you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Yoacham.
Welcome. Hello. Thank you for the second hearing and for everyone coming out today. I'm Dan Yoacham. I live on my own in Huntington Beach. I'm twenty-five and I'm an electrical field engineer. I owe most of my success to the activities I'm involved in and the people I've surrounded myself with, both of which are heavy influenced by video games and my love for them. One thing I noticed and wanted to address to you guys is when I heard the point of high quality. And surely I thought something has positive effect on me could be anything less than high quality. It is true that any hobby in excess will have its negative effects. I'm sure there are parents who are watching, who have come home to see their children in front of the Xbox with an uneasy feeling. My parents certainly did not condone dumping hours a day in the television. However, little did they know, I was on my own. I hooked up the games myself. I cleaned the games that weren't working. And I struggled within the game itself. I was learning mild technical skills, problem solving, strategy, critical thinking, and most importantly, dealing with failure and frustration at an early age. In high school, I moved my junior year, and this caused my friends to be cut off, and I spent more time in my gaming communities. By then, I had earned and saved enough money to buy my own computer and troubleshoot all the issues that came with it. I needed to know how my hardware was going to run my games. With these communities, I found a place that I could compete healthily. I could run my own teams. To start winning, I needed functionality as well as professionalism. I was forced to configure servers to play on, edit webpages for scheduling and sharing strategy. I had to improve my speaking so that I could communicate with my teammates effectively in a stressful situation. In all, it was just a completely healthy experience. I was inadvertently building every skill I needed to shine in my career and paved the way for a higher quality of life.
One minute.
By the time I entered the workforce, I progressed so quickly utilizing these skills that my college courses became remedial. When we look at the content of Street Fighter and Mortal Kombat, the game isn't about violence. It's about the competition of strategy, quick thinking, breaking down the opponent's play style. It's about the proper execution of controlling your character. It's about the work they put in to learn situational awareness. When we talk about revenue, Valve hosted an international tournament last year in a different video game, which almost brought in $11 million and was televised on ESPN, whom later made the public statement that they were delighted with their results. This year's international has reached over $16 million and counting for the August event. This is but one game amongst a handful with a similar following, including the ones being played by the people behind me. I ask for the benefit of everyone here that you reconsider your decision for denying Super Arcade in Azusa. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Nessa. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Nisha Rodriguez. I'm originally from Diamond Bar, California, and I currently reside in Corona, California. I am an information, information technology analyst. And I wanted to speak for a parenting demographic. I'm here with my sons. And I kind of wanted to speak about how I grew up in the eighties. I grew up playing video games. It was like the thing to do. And as I got older, I was excited when I had my children to kind of introduce them to the gaming world, so to speak. And we only had the chance to go to Super Arcade one time before it closed down because finally my kids got old enough. You know, I was like really excited for that. And I was really excited to hear that it would be opening again. And so it was very disappointing to find out that we wouldn't have a place to go where I can share my love of gaming with them. We have attended other arcades in L.A., Santa Ana, Claremont, Anaheim. And I can tell you that when we go, we go with groups. We go with other families who have kids. My peers I grew up with, they have kids, and we're all excited to do that together. And I can say that when we do go to these events, we go out to dinner. We stay in that community. We do bring our money, our disposable income as professionals in our thirties and forties. And we are excited to learn more about the community we come into. I can tell you, I didn't know a lot about Anaheim until I started going there. Then all of a sudden, I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, umami burger," you know, the packing house. And then we went to, you know, we found all these great places to visit, you know, like Pokonometry and all kinds of places that I found because I went there with my family and friends and their families to this arcade event, to an arcade party. It was very exciting. And I've, and I would think that, I don't even think I would know that would happen with your town. Is, as a parent, I can tell you for sure, I will be coming if Super Arcade comes here. And I, my peers with their families will be coming. Other families will be coming. I can speak to the quality of life issue. Both of my sons have done well. I've done well. I have a son who's an International Back Glory student. I have another who's a Gate Magnet student. I do police their video gaming in terms of, I know that they enjoy it, but I always make sure their work's done. They're good students. They do their job. And gaming has only brought a positive influence in their lives. It allows them to get together with their friends and have a good time. So again, I would also ask you to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Sheri Han. Ray Nagar will be ready. You're on deck.
Hi. Good evening, guys. My name is Sheri Han, and I currently live in San Gabriel, California. We are fifteen years into this new century, but I feel like everybody is still stuck with the same impression of arcades that we had from decades ago. When people think about the word arcades and the environment it creates and the people it brings, some people associate it with robberies and fights and these rowdy crowds of teenage boys. Some people even said that opening up this arcade would be detrimental to not only this neighborhood, but to the family and especially their children. You know, there were words and statements that were brought in like public safety, alcohol, and drugs that were brought into the discussion when we were trying to open up this arcade. So there has been many reasons and facts that show that arcades have grown progressively over the past thirty years, including Super Arcade. Super Arcade was never the typical arcade where a lot of people went to spend time playing Pac-Man or pinball machines or Frogger. Super Arcade was actually like a training ground to a lot of, to a lot of casual and serious tournament players like myself. On the business side of things, we think about marketing and commercial and retail. And the thing is, all, all our players here, we are the same players that make it onto the news, onto the internet because we win tournaments that, you know, that range from $60,000 to half a million in grand prizes. And you think about that and you think about the type of attention and business we could bring to the city of Azusa. But besides business, because I'd actually rather focus on the residents of Azusa that were concerned with the opening of Super Arcade, the issue of safety and security was brought up. I just wanted to make it a point that the security guards and the surveillance, that was all deemed mandatory by outside parties and not by the owner of Super Arcade. We were just trying to follow the guidelines to make this process go as smoothly as possible. But to be honest, we've never needed security in our previous locations in the city of Walnut. I actually think it was completely unnecessary. So we are all here asking, just for 3.6% of this lot that has been vacant for fourteen years, to call our new home. A lot of, you know, there was a lot of false impressions about us being delinquents and hoodlums and whatnot, but I can guarantee you that we are people that care about sanitation and the concerns and safety of neighbors around us. We even raised $200,000 last year for, I mean, two years ago, for breast cancer research. So we are all here today to ask the city, the city of Azusa and its residents to allow us to have this sanctuary, to have this arcade, because we welcome you guys and your community and your family into our community, and we only ask for you guys to do the same for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray. Next speaker after Ray will be Mark Tichemian. Welcome, sir.
Good evening. My name is Ray Nagar. I am a relatively new resident here to Azusa. I transplanted from San Francisco not too long ago. And one of the, I can't really say that I know very well the video gaming community so much, but I do know the anime and cosplay community as well. And there, there is a lot of tie-in between that community and the fighting game community and the video gaming community overall. And the thing that I notice about, about both communities is that they both like share an interest in video games and, as well as some of the other interests that we have is anime fans and whatnot. We also, or like, I also think that, you know, one of the common things about the, or about both communities are that they're very diverse. And one of the things that I really enjoyed about being here as a resident here in Azusa is that the community here is diverse and is also very welcoming as well. I've grown to really love this community. And I've, and working over at one of the restaurants here in the area and speaking to some of the, some of the residents here in Azusa is that they're looking forward to a lot of the changes that are coming, not only just with the gold line coming in, but with all of these new businesses popping up and this new growth that's coming into the area. I think that Azusa, or I think that Azusa will definitely benefit because we have, or because we're also, or because not only with the, or with the new, or the gold line extension coming in, we'll also be bringing in more people. be bringing in more people into the area, and we need to give them something to look forward to as they're coming out here. I mean, like, a lot of the residents that I've spoken to, even some of the students at the, or at the colleges as well, have been looking for more places to be able to enjoy in the area. And I think that having Super Arcade move into the area will definitely bring in that, or bring people out, promote more businesses into the area. And, you know, the gaming community as well as our communities are very welcoming, just as Azusa is. So if...
Thirty seconds.
All right. If, so I would love it if you guys would actually reconsider your decision and definitely give Mr. Watson and this community the welcome into the area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mark? After Mark will be Kyle Garcia.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Mark Chaminian. I'm from Pasadena, California. I am the owner of Prime Surgery Centers. It's a multiple specialist surgery center all over Southern California. We own three centers. And I live a very professional life in and out of my home. I came here today to speak on behalf of Mike Watson and Super Arcade, because I not only believe in what Mike is trying to do with the community, but I also believe the good it will do to whatever city lets him operate this business, and in this case, Azusa. Background about myself, you know, I manage three hundred physicians on a day-to-day basis in a professional environment. When I get off work, I go to the gym. I come home, spend time with my family, eat dinner, go to sleep because I'm too tired to do anything else. I just described to you over fifty percent of how the average day would go of your typical corporate American employee. In my experience, I found out that everyone should develop some sort of a hobby. And as you know, a hobby is an activity done in one's leisure time for pleasure, right? And I think that a hobby is a very, very good balance to distinguish your professional life and your creativity life, that everybody should have to have a nice equilibrium. And, you know, personally, for me, a hobby has been a really good stress reliever. You know, I have a lot of stress from work and my profession. And it's given me a chance to explore my creative side. Having a hobby also, you know, can let somebody that's shy, you know, in school or something, have a chance to speak to strangers upon a common interest and get past them being shy. My point is that allowing this arcade to be in the city will provide not only for the kids growing up in this generation, but also for many adults like myself that have the pleasure of calling the activities that take place at this arcade as our hobby. You know, I right now have found preference for my circle of friends after I found and started going to this arcade. I actually prefer these guys as my friends and some of my friends that I grew up in grade school, because the level of honesty with this group of people I have the pleasure of calling my friends is unmatched, and I admire that. By letting Super Arcade have the permit, it's also going to improve the city's economy. The city makes money from taxes and fees charged to residents, business, and visitors. That's no secret. If you put any business there, it's going to do the same thing. But as a businessman, I'm actively looking to, for property to buy or business to start, and I have no business in Azusa whatsoever. You know, having this arcade in Azusa will have business for me to come here, to see the city, to, you know, go to the restaurants and contribute to the economic growth of the city. And, you know, the only way that I'll be here, to be honest with you, is if Super Arcade is here, and I'm just only speaking to myself. And it'll do a lot of good for, you know, the children and minors to have a stress-free or drug-free environment to go in a family-style environment. And, you know, I've been a mentor to countless amount of people at the arcade. As in my normal professional career, I would not have the opportunity to give any guidance to anybody. But anyway, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Kyle? And next will be Peter Avila.
Hello. Hi. Thanks for seeing me tonight. My name is Kyle Garcia. I live in Alhambra, and I am a broadcast journalist. Thank you for hearing me tonight. It is the welcoming leadership of the city of Azusa that fosters great community and business leaders, and that's exactly what Mr. Watson and Super Arcade are, business leaders with a great community. I watched the previous meeting and knows several commissioners expressed some concerns they had, so I'm here to address those. Some of the commissioners said that they welcome our community and our business, but maybe not to this particular plaza. Well, I'm here to say that this plaza is perfect. So according to the minor use permit application, the minor use permit is based on the finding of fact, and the staff report said that based on findings of fact, they recommend granting a minor use permit to Mr. Watson. So if the application process says it should be based on the finding of fact, and if staff has researched the matter to find facts that support granting Mr. Watson a minor use permit, then I think he should be granted his minor use permit. One of the commissioners previously said that they were tired of granting variances to businesses wanting to come to Azusa. In fact, variances are a different part of the Azusa municipal code, and minor use permits are different from variances. The Super Arcade would operate within the general plan, and according to the same staff report, it was found to operate within the development code. Variances are sought when a business wants to operate outside of the development code. Additionally, the sentiment that takes the history of previous applicants and uses against Mr. Watson is unfair, in my opinion, and I ask that Mr. Watson's application be evaluated for its own merits, which city staff has recommended for approval. But I recognize that some of the staff questioned, I mean, some people questioned the staff's methodology, asking how does this improve the quality of life for the residents of Azusa? They took issue with the word "fighting," and they saw a red flag there, which is understandable. But we play fighting video games where you have, it's entirely digital. We play on remotes, and it's on a TV screen. There's no hand-to-hand combat, and it's entirely a test of strategy and hand-eye coordination. The ESRB, who's the authority that says which audiences are appropriate for which games, has said, has recommended Street Fighter for teenagers and Super Smash Brothers for everyone. And those are two of probably the most popular games that will be played at the arcade. I agree with everyone that's been up tonight in saying that we're a great community and bringing us here would diversify the economy. And I think if anything, we would only improve the quality of life. So thank you for listening, and I hope that you all change your recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Peter? And on deck, I think it's Henry Choi.
Thank you. City Commissioner, my name is Peter Avila, and I'm from Montebello. I am a recent law school graduate. I have known Mr. Watson over half of my life. I'm here to speak on his character and line the commission on the arcade and gaming community and to address the concerns of Azusa residents. I began attending arcades and arcade tournaments as a teenager in the early 2000s. The impetus for my attendance was a dysfunctional home. I had an absentee father and an abusive mother. Going to arcades was a way for me to escape the tumult at home. Additionally, it was a way for me to enjoy myself, compete, and make new friends. The gaming community was and continues to be very friendly and welcoming. While at arcade events, I met a lot of my very best friends and closest friends, including Mr. Watson. During my years as part of the community, he became a big brother to me. He always encouraged me to do well in school and to focus on my studies. He said that if video games ever detracted from my schoolwork or performance in school, that I should stop playing and refocus. Moreover, he encouraged me to apply to college. Arcades and the gaming community never distracted me from my schoolwork. If anything, they helped me stay away from negative influences. Some of my classmates and school friends during my teenage years fell prey to negative influences, and many of them joined gangs or dropped out of school. I, on the other hand, graduated high school with honors and attended college at UCLA. While at UCLA, I became less involved in arcades and gaming, but still remained in close contact with Mr. Watson. He would regularly call me to see how I was doing and was always concerned with my well-being. He knew I received no support from my family and always offered to help me pay for tuition, books, or other expenses. On at least three occasions, Mr. Watson helped me pay for my books and housing while in college. I am telling you this to demonstrate not only Mr. Watson's character, but also to underscore his positive effect and role in the arcade community. He has been an instrumental figure in my education and accomplishments. I am both fortunate and grateful to have met him. If it were not for arcades, I would not have met one of the most important persons in my life. Next, I would like to specifically address the concerns of Azusa community members. During the last hearing, a few of them mentioned issues regarding vagrancy, loitering, and urination. All of those issues are relevant to Mr. Watson's business. All of those issues are, first, they're pre-existing issues at the shopping mall and surrounding area. Mr. Watson has not even opened up his business, and to blame him beforehand for vagrancy, loitering, and urination is both unfair and prejudicial. Second, to argue that Mr. Watson's business will exacerbate these issues is equally unfair and contrary to the facts. Mr. Watson has run his business for four years in the city of Walnut without issue. This was not a coincidence. Mr. Watson treats his patrons with respect, and they reciprocate by respecting...
Thank you, sir. Henry? Next would be Aaron Smith.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Henry Choi. I'm twenty-nine years old, and I'm an IT consultant. I've been a patron of Super Arcade for about four years now, and I just wanted to speak about the benefits I've personally received from attending the arcade and getting to know the people here. For most of my life, I've always been a very shy and very socially kind of awkward kind of person, so it's really always difficult for me to make friends or kind of finetend kind of groups. But, you know, to cope with that, I had picked up video games as a hobby, you know, like, amongst other things, like watching movies or playing guitar, you know, it's still definitely my favorite hobby. So when I had met all these people at the arcade just only a couple of years ago, like, things started to change for me, really. You know, I'd always struggled with these kind of issues, but being able to connect with these people like so easily for me and help me open up just has really changed my life for the better. And it's really, you know, poured into my personal life and also into my professional life as well, especially as an IT consultant, where like my customer service is and my ability to communicate with my clients is key and crucial to success. And I know for a fact that all the clients that I have and all the, yeah, all the clients that I have have rave reviews for the work that I've done for them, and they're more than satisfied with the service I've had. And I attribute it to the time I've had in these last few years, just knowing these people. And I know that, you know, many other types of, you know, many other people have that kind of similar issue where it's, they're not able to communicate well with people or they're very shy and it's really hard to open up. But, you know, with us having this common ground of just playing video games, it's really given me that avenue to, you know, improve these skills, and it's really changed my life for the better. So I really think that bringing this community and allowing these experiences to be shared with the youth and the adults alike here as well, you know, and even such a short amount of time that I've had with them, like, it's can be also beneficial to anyone's life. So I'd like you to reconsider to grant the Super Arcade their permits. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Aaron Smith? And then Mr. Watson will be our last speaker.
Good evening. My name is Aaron Smith. I'm from, sorry, I live in West LA. I work in the advertising industry. My company is IGN.com. We're the largest video game news site in the world. Came to speak to you today. I've been a regular patron of Super Arcade for the past several years. Used to commute there every once or twice a week when it was open from my Beverly Hills office. What I wanted to bring to you today was just a little bit of data. You've heard some really good stories about why the community is really good and why we go to that arcade and all the benefits from the economic background and all the other things. But I also want to bring some data about who gamers are and what your economic and educational background is. My company collects data on gamers, because that's our business. And they've allowed me to share this data directly with you. I actually have printouts of this data if you want it, but I'll just speak to some top-line facts at present. So the study was done in 2014, from August 22nd to September 10th. Data collected was two thousand and one hundred and nineteen gamers and five hundred and fifty-four non-gamers as a control group. There's more detailed data. I'll skip past that. First thing, gamers as in general are fifty-two percent male, forty-eight percent female, so you're about fifty-fifty. Income, the mean income of gamers is about fifty-four point five seven thousand dollars per year. The mean income of US citizen is about forty-eight point six eight, so above the average. Spending, gamers on average spend about sixty-eight, seventy dollars a month on games and eight hundred and ten dollars annually. QSR for spending is sixty-six dollars a month and twenty, I'm sorry. So quick QSR, quick server retail, so QSR restaurants, so like McDonald's and Chipotle, and then just like local diners and whatnot. They spend about sixty-six dollars a month, eight hundred dollars a year versus, in terms of employment, gamers, forty-six percent are employed versus non-gamers, fifty-seven percent employed. The reason for that is that many gamers are students. Thirty-four percent of gamers are students and twenty percent of gamers, non-gamers, are students. In terms of employment, it's even between gamers and non-gamers. In terms of education, gamers are more likely to hold a college degree than your average person. Forty-two percent of gamers have a college degree. The non-gamers have, thirty-six percent have a college degree. The same could be said of the gamers' parents. About fifty-two percent of gamers' parents have college degrees versus thirty-seven for non-gamers. Just some common myths that are kind of debunked from our data. Gamers are more likely to use social media and be socially active. They're nineteen percent more likely to play sports than a non-gamer, and they're seven percent more likely to go out on dates. Yes, yeah, it's a lot of data.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Yeah, we'll take a copy if you'd like to.
We've made a copy of the information presented. It's on the dais if any member of the public is interested.
Mr. Watson, welcome. Before you start, I'd like to make a recommendation to the commission, if it's okay with you, to give Mr. Watson five minutes, him being the applicant. I'm sure there's a lot you'd like to say. So if it's okay with the commission? Okay, five minutes.
Thank you for seeing me once again. I went home and studied, and, you know, with open ears, I listened to everything everyone had to say, the commission, including the people that resided in Azusa that came to speak against us. I believe, I believe the people that came here tonight already went through everything that I would want to go through and cover in terms of the safety issues and all that. I would like to speak more on how we can benefit the city of Azusa in a monetary income way, where we would be providing you five hundred unique patrons weekly that I have as regulars. They would be coming to your city and spending money. They would be enhancing the businesses in the local area. And in terms of a safety issue, I did go to the sheriff's department to get a printed proof that there was no issues during the time I was there. They do not provide anything on letterhead, as the watchman asked me to go to City Hall. So I did go to City Hall, and an associate planner named Chris Vasquez sent me an email to share with you guys stating that there has been no issues actually at that arcade since it was open in the late eighties. If you guys would like to take a look at it, he said, please contact him if there's any issues. The bottom line is, all you guys said that you would be welcoming to my business in your city, and you can see the benefits of it, but the main problem was the Edgewood Center itself. And I can understand there's a problem with the landlord maybe not being readily available to you guys, not working with the city to improve as quickly as you would like him to. But the huge impact of the gym coming in, I think that's going to make just the biggest difference to you guys. He's going to bring in a lot of people. The mall will be very, very well-lit after this place is there. The security issue, I've spoken to Terrence Tally, who has mentioned that he spoke to you guys during the time of the gym being brought forward to the city. He's the guy running the show for the MC Strauss Company, and he's told me that he's tried his best to conform to everything that you guys have asked. And I tried to contact you guys before this hearing to see if there was anything I can do to ensure you that we would be following all the guidelines, but unfortunately, I wasn't able to get a hold of anyone that wanted to speak, so I'm here today. And I don't believe, I don't believe that it's fair that I'm kind of stuck in between the war, in a sense, between you guys and the landlord. You guys are doing your job, obviously, in keeping the best interests of the city here, and you only heard from residents that were against us. But today I have residents that are from Azusa, and I believe they outnumber the residents that were against us last time. So if you guys are really for the people of Azusa, then the majority speaks that they would like us here. And once again, I understand that the landlord might not be the most cooperative person, but I'm not the owner of the property. I'm just a business trying to come in here and shed a bright spot in the center of your town. You guys... You guys said you'd welcome me anywhere in the city, but where best to start and make something more productive? Where's it best to fix a problem than start at the center of everything? You could be planting like a flower in the desert, which is us, and we could spread all over to you guys, and I just think our positive influence would greatly change the whole demeanor of the plaza. And I just please ask you to reconsider because if you guys still won't know, I will be appealing, and it's going to cost me money, and just like everyone else, I pay my taxes, I've paid my money to, you know, even file for this permit. I filed for two, which costs even more money, obviously, and it's just, it's just adding up. I've been unemployed for quite some time now due to this, and if you guys force me to appeal, it'll be three more weeks with no job. It'll be a $2,700 appeal fee just for a shot at this. So, I just ask you as people just to realize, I'm on your side. I'm here to help this community. I'm not here to harm you. You've seen all the people we can bring, and you've seen the good we can do for you, and just, I'm just asking for a chance. Please, please put aside any problem you have with the landlord and just look at me as a separate entity, just trying to come into your community and make a difference. And that's just all I ask for tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so we'll close the public participation at this time. And staff, where are we at now?
You have a resolution before you. You can vote on that resolution. If you have a different idea of where you want to go, you would need to direct staff to renotice and bring this item back in September.
Okay.
So, those are your two options.
Okay, and as far as...
And if you vote to deny the application, the applicant has 20 days to file an appeal, and that appeal would most likely go in sometime in the September meeting. Either the first Monday, which I think is, I believe we skip a Monday because of the holiday, so it'll probably be on Tuesday, that first, or it would be on the third Monday of that month. That would be up to the city clerk. I don't know if the city attorney has any other...
No, I would reiterate what Mr. Christiansen said is, I mean, you have more than two options, but the main option here is you can either adopt a resolution as presented, which is a resolution of denial. As I mentioned earlier, procedurally, you are limited because you denied the application at the last meeting, and instructed staff to come back, and this meeting hasn't been noticed as a public hearing. And if you were to go a different route, we would have to go back and publicly, and provide notice for any sort of reconsideration. You can also amend the resolution in any way you see fit. If there's findings in there that you don't think really are the findings that you want to make for this matter, you can amend that. So, I just wanted to stress, you do have more leeway here than just the two, but that's really the gist.
Okay, and as you mentioned, if we adopt the resolution of denial, then the applicant has within 20 days to appeal, and then it would go to the city council, correct?
Yes, that's correct. 20 calendar days from tonight, and the appeal would be before the city council. The city clerk would set the date for that appeal.
And on the other items that you can do, the amendments that you would make would only be to the resolution of denial, not to change the resolution to a resolution of approval. So, that would have to go, that would have to come back as a new resolution, and we'd have to notice it as a public hearing.
A different resolution number, starting the process all over, or same resolution?
No, it would be the same resolution numbers, would just be come back with a different resolution that would be noticed as a public hearing to reconsider.
It would just be taking a 180 and going back where we started from.
Exactly.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to open up discussion from the commissioners if we can. Commissioner Avila.
I'd like to start by thanking everybody for being here, and everything I heard just now at the podium was beautiful. The resonating themes were community and networking, de-stressors, skill building, families, economic improvement. Thank you for being those kind of residents here in our region. And how could we say no to bringing those things to our city? And when I look at the list of where everyone's from, mainly everyone's from out of town, Monrovia, Alhambra, Illinois, Diamond Bar, I wanted to tell you that I live here in Azusa, and it's the same city that my great-grandma moved to. So, my family has been here for 100 years, literally 100 years. And I also have a police officer brother, a brother who sits on the Azusa Police Department as, I think he's a...
Corporal, isn't he?
Corporal? He just got promoted, so I don't really keep up with his title, sorry about that. But the point I'm saying is, we here up on the dais know our community best, and I've expressed to Mr. Watson directly, it's not the clientele. We would love to have all those things in our city. In fact, we strive for that. Being on this board and giving our personal time, we strive to bring all those things that everyone in this room represents to our city. However, being here and living here and knowing this city through my grandparents and my parents and myself, again, I'm going to state, it's the shopping center. And what I would like to ask of staff is, the beauty of the planning commission and the beauty of the planning process is a no means go back to the drawing board and rethink it. So, instead of turning these people away because of the issues that the shopping center has had and has a history of having, is there any way that we can engage with Mr. Watson to find another location? I don't want to say no to what all of you have testified to tonight, because it's actually very beautiful, and we need it, and we need you here. But, it's the location that I have an issue with, and the neighbors don't even want it. And when I have something going in in my neighborhood, I feel I have the most at stake because I live there, and I've lived there for 100 years. So, I would like to respect the neighbors, the immediate neighbors, but yet I don't want to reject all the wonderful things that were presented here tonight. So, I guess I'm looking to staff to say, I don't want a no to be a no to Super Arcade. I would like a no to be, let's go back to the drawing board and work with these folks. And I don't want to cause any more financial burden on Mr. Watson. So, this is a tough one. We need what these folks are bringing to our city. And it's almost, this was said last time by Commissioner Contreras, who, by the way, has stepped down because he started a PhD program, and congrats to everybody in the room who has pursued higher education. I'm a former teacher, so I'm all in favor of that. So, that's the reason he's not here today. But, here we are, a bunch of intelligent folks, we need to make the right decision, and I'm looking to staff to ask, how do we accommodate them and keep them safe and bring what the neighbors of the Edgewood Shopping Center want? I don't have that answer, so I'm going to need some input.
Okay, we'll give them a minute.
It's not an easy one.
No, and just to give them more time as well, my comments are the same as last meeting as well, and I did say last meeting that we would welcome you guys to our community, but we could not, I did not like this location for this particular business. You guys are a bunch of quality people that we need to bring to Azusa and spend your money here, because that's what we're about as well. You guys spending your dollars here, you guys coming to visit places like a couple of you speakers said. The only reason why you would come here would be for the arcade and to spend your money here in the city of Azusa. That's what we encourage. Am I against, Mr. Watson? Am I against the arcade? Absolutely not. I'm actually for you, and you, with these people who came out and supported you, you gained a fan today, and I'm a fan of you and what you stand for and what you've built. But again, I will still stand by my decision last meeting and no for this location. Now, can staff help us work and find an alternative? Let's go, turn to staff and see if we can. Or if not, then, again, there is protocol. You can appeal. You can go to the city council. City council may decide something totally different than what we've decided. But as for me, this location would be a no, my decision will be the same. But again, thank you guys for coming, thank you for speaking. We extended the time so we can hear everyone who turned in a card. In addition to that, we gave Mr. Watson more time. So, just to let you know, we are listening to your needs and we are listening to your wants. But again, this location for this business, to me, will not work, and the reasons are noted on the resolution, and again, we'll turn to staff to see what we can find. Mr. Lee, to give them more time, do you want your comments?
We'll try to answer your question. The application is tied to a location. Therefore, it would be, you need to act on the location because there's a certain time limit that has to happen when an application is submitted and how quickly it gets to a public hearing body. Certainly, we would work with Mr. Watson, and we've had meetings with Mr. Watson since the last meeting, and certainly, we could attempt to help him find other locations. But, the application before you is on a certain location, so you'll need to act on that one way or the other. You know, we can certainly meet with him, try to find other locations within the city, but he probably would need to file another application unless directed by the city council not to do that. I can't waive, I can't waive permit fees, I can't waive things like that. We discussed about the possibility of Mr. Watson withdrawing his application, but that's really not a good option either. Maybe the city attorney...
Yeah, no, it's extremely tricky from, if we're talking about the sort of financial issue here, once you've submitted an application, the application is flat parcel, the council has set fees to recoup its costs associated with processing those applications and hearing them. So, it's not simply a case of the director waiving fees. Of course, you know, the city is a business-friendly city, and part of Mr. Christiansen's role is economic development, and he and his department will, of course, work with Mr. Watson, as he has been already, to try and find a location, and I think, based on this direction today, if you go the route it appears you're going, we'll try and work with other segments of city staff to find a way to accommodate him on the financial side also.
Your other option is just to deny the application and to allow Mr. Watson to appeal it to the city council and finish out the process. Like I said earlier, the application is tied to the parcel. You know, we don't give out applications or permits that are not tied to parcel, it's land use, so whatever's done is tied to this parcel in this spot within the, so that's where our constraint is. But certainly, we would be willing, and we've met with Mr. Watson on several occasions and corresponded by email, and tried to assist him through this process. But at this point, we don't see any other option but to act on this application and move forward so that we can, so that he can either appeal it or contact us and try to work with us to see if we could find a different location for him. That would be up to Mr. Watson, that's...
Now, you've said you've had conversations with Mr. Watson before, and has another location been brought up? Have we looked at other locations thus far?
We haven't, we've thought about some other locations, but one of the issues is that, you know, he would have to go back out and meet with those locations, and I reached out to Citrus Crossing. There is no vacant space in Citrus Crossing at the moment. We thought of another location earlier today, but it would take time for him to negotiate that out. The other aspect is that rents are going to vary by where the location is. So, rents in this location are probably lower than rents that are in the downtown or in Citrus Crossing area. So, that's another thing that needs to be considered in his application and in his business plan. As he stated in his first hearing, in the first hearing, the rent for this facility, which is larger, was less than what he was paying in the city of Walnut. So, that's a huge consideration on his part. So, other than that, I can't think of anything else that, at this point, we can do. We can suggest, we can suggest things that we see out in the community that are vacant, but realize that the department is just me and Etzen right now, so we have our hands full doing other things, but we could do what we can to assist.
Okay. Mr. Lee, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Again, thank you for coming, everybody. So, am I being so bold and say, if not there, then where? It's a 4,000 some square feet location that they need. Where else in this city is there a location that big where there's sufficient parking, where it's already a retail location? I mean, I'm sure we could find some commercial location, but that would be a warehouse. I don't think you want to run a type of business like that over there. So, if not there, then where? We can definitely say, yes, we will help you, and let's go look for something, but do you actually have anything in mind? I don't.
Well, it was suggested by some speakers here tonight somewhere near the colleges. Now, Citrus Crossing isn't the only place. How about where Chick-fil-A is? There's some vacant space. It may not be as large, I don't know what the rents are. There's a new transit-oriented center going in at the Citrus Crossing, that would be right near the colleges. I don't want to give up on these folks, and I also don't want to put them in danger, and I don't think it's fair putting Mr. Watson in between us and the shopping center owner, because that's been a long dialogue that's taken years, and there's been very little change over the years. For whatever reason, the city and the shopping center owner can't get it together. So, it really isn't fair to him. And of course, we're talking without asking his opinion, it's all up to him. The rents are probably going to be higher because they're lower there for a reason, and I just hate to turn away what all these folks are willing to bring to our city, because we need that here. We foster that here. And I think at the planning stage, a no means go back to the drawing board, and no doesn't mean no. Nothing's happened yet other than some financial commitments, which is big. Go ahead, Mr. Lee.
The, but remember, if it's a no to this location, then you need to act on this resolution and deny the project, and then have Mr. Watson go back to the drawing board. And certainly, you know, we, while we, it's not our job to find him a new location, we can certainly move him in the right direction and suggest certain avenues, but...
Mr. Lee? So, it seems like there's not a real good location in mind right now.
I don't know, Mr. Lee. I haven't done any research on it, so like, you know, off the top of my head, I can't say, yeah, right here would be perfect. I can't say that.
With all due respect, wouldn't that be our job?
Do you have anything in mind?
No, I don't, actually.
Yeah, I need a little time. I can't think right off the top of my head. I'd have to do some research.
That's why, with all due respect, if not here, then where? That's my first point. Second point is, if the city and the resident of Azusa has been speaking with the owner of this building, this property for so long, and nothing has been done, shouldn't we ask why? Is it maybe because we have no teeth?
Mr. Watson has teeth because he can withhold rent. It's a duty of the landlord to provide...
rent. There's a duty of the landlord to provide a usable location to the tenants. And as, if that contract, that agreement is broken, Mr. Watson has the power to withhold rent. We don't. We can fine them $50, $100 to clean up the trash, but Mr. Watson can withhold, I don't know what the rent is over there, if you don't mind me asking really quick. I'm not paying you $5,000 this month because the outside smells like tea. Can you power that wash tonight, or else I'm not paying? That's teeth. And that is why nobody's been talking, listening to it, because do you know why? Gee, Florida Mexico's gone, so there's no bite there. The rest is empty. BiLO's gone. Firestone is gone. The clothing shop that they're trying to take over has been empty since '13. So ghosts have no teeth. I don't know. Sorry about that. So of course, no, nothing's being done, because there's nobody with the power to say, you know what, if you don't address this issue right now, I'm not paying rent. Me, as a resident of Azusa, what can I do? I can go find the property manager and say, ooh, you need to clean that up. And as good business people, they should heed my comments, of course. But why would they? But Mr. Watson has the power. I've made mistakes before. I hear new things. I think differently. I remember last hearing, I said, why don't we use some type of revenue replacement thing where, you know, we don't feel so bad even though it's not retail, that we can get enough license feedback. But looking at this crowd, they're coming into Azusa because of that. I mean, like you said, majority of people are not from Azusa. So they're going to come in, probably going to eat before or eat afterwards. My thing is, I can't believe the little restaurant next door to that proposed location is not here to say, we need to open this, because his business is probably going to grow tremendously because of that. He should have been here, actually. And so, of course, they're going to go eat before and afterwards. And as for why is open late, well, as you can see, majority of them are professionals. They go to work. They get off of work at six, seven, eight, go home, relax a little bit, then they go to their after-work activities, right? If you have them closed at eight or nine, by the time these people show up, it's closed. That's why they have to be open that late, because do you, do you really want a place that's closed at five? And what does that say about the type of people that go there then? If you can go to a place before five, right? And side story, I'll give two side stories. How's that? I did my undergraduate at USC. You know what's underneath the law school? An arcade. It's about the size of half of this dais, and my favorite game there was Raiden. At USC Law School, there's an arcade down there. Why they do that? Stress reliever. I freaked in it many times. Number two, and I grew up in Arcadia, lived in LA for three years, lived in Pasadena for four years. I've been in here for 11 years already. And so when I bought my house, I was 25, single. One day, I went to Stater Brothers when I first moved in. I found some, you know, some people, and I, and it sounds funny. I said, hey, guys, what's your fun thing to do in Azusa at night here? I was 25, single, new to the city, right? I kid you not, this is what this person said, and he was serious about it. There's Donut Man. Just in case nobody knows what Donut Man is, it's a donut shop that's open 24 hours a day.
England Dora.
England Dora! So that's the hot thing in town. 11 years later, Donut Man still. When I was in Pasadena, we go to Old Town. Wow. And come on, right? And how are we going to attract the next generation of young professionals to want to live in Azusa with awesome housing? You want to give them something to do at night, right? Because they're thinking, should I live in Pasadena or Monrovia or, you know, near the beaches or in Azusa? Where should I live? Hmm. They're going to consider many things, of course, housing, cost, and also nightlife. What do we have to attract that next generation of young professionals? If you say Donut Man, Glendora is going to get that grouped in. So like I said, I've made mistakes before, and they have educated me. And I said, you know what, if anything, I want them to somehow encourage them to show up now, because I want that disposable money that they can bring from other cities to spend at the restaurants here. That's my thinking. And if we're waiting for another retail store to show up there, we can, we can. That thing's been empty since 2013. We can. Come on. Signs, times change. I know this might sound funny, but I don't buy my clothes at the mall. I don't think anybody probably like, you know, can't believe that. But yeah, I order all my clothes online. So that's why maybe that clothing shop went out of business, right? Today's Amazon Day, right? Prime Day, right? That changed the business of bookstores. Why do you think a lot of bookstores are closing? So we can keep waiting for some unicorn bookstore or clothing store that wants to open there? And it's like, but let's hold off to it. Let's hold off. We're going to have a retail store so we get sales tax. Or we have a current viable applicant with current market share, and you've seen how he does business. I mean, somebody coming all the way from East Coast just to speak on his behalf, that's got to say a whole lot. And if we partner with Mr. Watson, he's going to have the teeth to make sure the residents around that shopping center will have the clean place, because that's repeat this word track. If you don't clean up, I'm not paying rent tomorrow. That's the word track Mr. Watson's going to use. $5,000 a month, $60,000 a year. Is that power now? I think that's a whole lot more power. I'm pretty sure it's going to be a much cleaner situation after Mr. Watson says that. And of course, the gym's going to do the same thing now too, right? That's power. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. But that clothing store that was in the shopping center was a female clothing store, so I don't think you put them out of business. Commissioner Avila, you have any other comments?
No, none at this time.
Staff?
You need to take action on the, on the resolution or give us direction to do something other than what is in the resolution. So you can either add to the resolution and then adopt. You can adopt the resolution as is, or you can direct us to, to bring this matter back to you at your next city planning commission meeting, which we would notice as really your three options.
You guys know where I stand, and all I could say is, there's three of us now. Please, we just need one more. I truly move that we table this so that staff can come back next, with the proper notice, next month with the resolution that was previous and approve this minor use permit. And let's make this place great, you know? Let's partner with Mr. Watson and have him help us make this place great.
I'm going to make the resolution as stated, but I encourage Mr. Watson to go ahead and appeal. And depending on how it votes, the vote can change. I can be the only one voting for this. But I would encourage Mr. Watson to appeal and bring it in front of the city council, and let them hear your case and let them vote as well. Again, and my comments and my motion here are not a reflection of you, sir, or your business. But it's just, I'm put up here to do a job, and my job, to me, tells me, without any personal emotion involved, just the facts that I have in front of me, that this is a no for me. So based on that, we have, I'd like to make a motion, a resolution number 2015-21, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the city of Azusa, denying minor use permit number MUP 2015-12 for extended hours of a coin-operated arcade located at 241 East Gladstone Street. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
I have a first and a second. All those in motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone against?
No.
No. Resolution 2015-22, resolution of the Planning Commission of Azusa, denying minor use permit number MUP 2015-13 to allow a commercial recreation facility indoor use of coin-operated arcade located at 241 East Gladstone Street. I'd like to make the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Me, no.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda would be Item J, discussion items from the planning commissioners. Commissioner Lee?
Nothing new, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Avila?
Nothing.
And I have nothing. Next item, Item K, would be adjournment.
Just a couple of things. So updates really quickly. September 19th is the Gold Line Station dedication. You'll be getting an invitation in the mail. Second thing is, you'd noticed that the weeds are down at the enterprise side as well as the building. So you don't need to worry about the weeds anymore. The building's down too.
They took them out like a week before the building went down.
Yeah. And, and just for the applicant's information, he has 20 days to appeal the decision. There is a form to be appealed, and you can get that paperwork from the city clerk. If you call tomorrow, we can walk you through again the process.
Okay. Meeting adjourned.